Good evening, everybody. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of May 16th, 2018. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 6th and is also available for streaming at the Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Because we do have a very large crowd here with us tonight and because what we have what some may regard as controversial subject matter to discuss later on in our meeting, I do want to remind folks in the audience to maintain proper decorum at all times. Note that there are no overt displays of either approval or derision, meaning no applause, cheering, booing, anything of that. While we do have some folks making presentations under public participation this evening, there is no public hearing tonight, and I would respectfully ask anybody who needs to engage in conversation with another audience member to please take those conversations outside so they're out of audio range. The first item on our agenda tonight is public participation by way of background. This is always the first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, and it provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. Those wishing to do so in the future can contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting. We'll recognize you for up to three minutes. Tonight, we have two requests to address the committee. We are first going to hear from representatives of the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association. We'll hear from you at this time if you want to come forward and introduce yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Noreen Christie, and I represent the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, a group of highly dedicated educational support professionals who value working in the Shrewsbury school system. As paraprofessionals, we serve as tools in various roles, including instructional classroom aides, child-specific aides, ABA technicians, CODAS, tutors, speech assistants, and media aides. We are an integral part of each student's educational experience and an asset to the teachers that we support. Our roles vary day-to-day due to the duties we are asked to perform, and with the projected budget cuts made to balance the budget, our roles will become even more varied as we will be called upon to do even more. We work with the children in the district who require not just the most help academically, but also need very personal care. We work with students who may not graduate without our assistance in their classrooms. We reinforce, modify, reteach in a way that our students can understand. We provide intervention when necessary. We cover recess and freezing cold, safely handle parent drop-off and pickup, and we're also asked to monitor dozens of students in order to provide teachers their valuable prep time. Some of our paras have been punched, kicked, or spit on, and they still come back every day. In spite of this, our common thread is to provide the best learning experience for our students, as well as to provide support, structure, and safety in and outside of the classroom. Our goal has been and continues to be through our contract negotiations and our commitment to Shrewsbury to attract and retain the highest caliber of paraprofessionals to support the students of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Shrewsbury spends below the state average on just about everything, and I would just like to take the time now to say that Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals are worth more. We are asking for a safer working environment, which means a safer learning environment for the students of Shrewsbury. We are also asking for a raise of less than $2 per hour over the next three years. We support the children of Shrewsbury, and now we're asking for Shrewsbury to support us. Thank you.
We have another representative from the Paraprofessionals Association who'd like to address us, or if you want to introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Kevin O'Connor. I am ABA tech at Shrewsbury High School. I began working for the Shrewsbury School Department in 2001. I've worked in the ELC classroom for the last 13 years. Over those 13 years, I have worked with some of the district's most severe special needs students at the high school level. I have been hit and kicked multiple times. My experiences are minor in comparison to what other paraprofessionals in the district have been through. What I am here for is to let you know how important the paraprofessionals are who work for the town of Shrewsbury School Department. The many paraprofessionals who I have worked with over the years have been integral in the lives and success of the students in the town of Shrewsbury, yet we continue to go underappreciated and unnoticed. So, over the last 17 years, I have been very flexible in shifting the roles to help out as much as I possibly could. I love my job. I have been a very loyal employee over the past 17 years, and now all I ask is for a little bit of loyalty back in terms of a fair contract.
Thank you for taking the time, and I will say at this time that the Shrewsbury School Committee deeply appreciates all of the work that each and every one of our paraprofessionals do. Of course, we are not allowed to discuss in open session any particulars as they relate to a contract negotiation, but I do want to express our sincere thanks to all of you for taking the time to come before us this evening, and of course, for all of the work that you do day in and day out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have another individual who's requested to address the committee under public participation tonight. That will be Mr. Brian Moss. Mr. Moss, you have three minutes, and take it away.
Brian Moss, 16 Ruthencircle. I just wanted to note that I'm speaking only on my behalf about my own opinions and concerns and not on behalf of any other person or group. I'm asking the school committee to revisit its decision to install a plastic artificial turf field and instead vote to install a high-use natural grass field that is organically managed. On April 25th, I reviewed the risk of microplastic pollution from a plastic artificial turf field and how that may pose a risk to the health of our athletes, students, and the risk to the quality of our drinking water supply. On May 9th, I proposed a safer and more cost-effective alternative, which is to use the $800,000 raised to install two natural grass fields to meet the extended use needs while avoiding the increased risk to our children and drinking water supply. Today, I wanted to bring to your attention the financial issues associated with a plastic artificial turf field. First, once a plastic artificial turf field is installed, the replacement of the field must be funded every decade. The turf committee has presented a one-slide rental plan showing how annual revenue of approximately $40,000 could be reserved and accumulate to the approximate $400,000 needed for the future carpet replacement. This is by no means a financial guarantee, and depending on the success or non-success of the rentals, Shrewsbury taxpayers may end up paying a portion of the future carpet replacement expense, or the school may have to wait longer to replace the plastic carpet, resulting in poorer and more deteriorated conditions, increasing the risk to our students, athletes, and environment. Second, Shrewsbury Youth Soccer's donation of $100,000 towards the installation of the turf field will be counted as a prepaid credit towards their future rental costs. In essence, the $100,000 will be paid back to Shrewsbury Soccer by Shrewsbury taxpayers in the form of a rental credit. I have not yet seen the pro forma rental plan updated to take into account the potential loss in additional revenue from Shrewsbury Youth Soccer's usage of the field. Third, on April 7th, St. John's High School announced plans for two new artificial turf fields on Main Street next to our water supply. Their project is scheduled to be completed for this fall. They are also planning to rent out their fields. Previously, the Shrewsbury High School Turf Committee had highlighted SHS's location as a benefit to renting out the field. However, now there may be significant competition as far as trying to rent out the fields that hasn't been accounted for in the pro forma rental plan. Again, as a result of these additional issues, Shrewsbury taxpayers may end up paying a portion of the future carpet replacement expense, or the school may have to wait longer to replace the plastic carpet, resulting in poorer and more deteriorated conditions, increasing the risk to our students, athletes, and environment. So, by voting instead to invest in natural grass fields, you can meet the extended use goals while avoiding the financial risks inherent in the high-stakes, high-risk investment in plastic artificial turf. Please reconsider your vote and vote to install the safer and lower-cost alternative of natural grass fields that are well-maintained, well-drained, and managed organically. Thank you. Please feel free to ask me questions.
Do you have any written materials to present the committee with?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moss. I do want to let you know as a courtesy, because you've come before this committee several times, the committee does not have any intention of revisiting this decision. Obviously, to continue to come before us is your right to do so, but as chairperson, I am going to respond that this is not a matter that the committee intends to take up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Members, anything to report? Ms. Gonzano.
Yes, I just wanted to inform the committee that Dr. Sawyer and I attended today the CPAC meeting, which is the Shrewsbury Education Parent Advisory Council, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. We have them every quarter, and it was a good conversation about transitions. They're coming in June, so they'll be updating the rest of us about what they're doing for their community and what they're doing for the entire school community, and so it was a very productive meeting.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Members, anything further to report? I have nothing. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. I did want to extend my congratulations on behalf of everyone in the district to the students at Shrewsbury High School who were inducted into the National Honor Society last Thursday evening. I thought the ceremony was nicely done and also included remarks from Paul Richard, who's the executive director of the Shine Initiative, whose mission is to recognize mental illness in children and young adults as a mainstream health issue. His remarks, I thought, were spot-on, as well as Mr. Bizidlo, the principal at the high school, who spoke on the importance of not forgetting about pursuing happiness as our students continue into their, the inductees into their senior year next year and the seniors who are graduating as they move on to higher education and beyond high school. So, again, congratulations to all the inductees. I'd also like to remind the community that tomorrow evening, the annual Shrewsbury High School Art Festival will be held in the largest commons beginning at 6:00 PM. This is always an extraordinary display of student talent from across the school year and the various art classes, from sculpture to ceramics to painting and all sorts of very creative pieces. There'll be a recognition program that begins at 7:00 PM, and if you can find your way to the high school tomorrow evening, you will be incredibly impressed with the talent and hard work of our students, and that is your superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment of student recognition for our speech and debate team, if they'd like to come forward at this time, on Saturday, April 7th. The local season of our SHS speech and debate team concluded with approximately 40 qualified members of the team attending the Massachusetts State Speech and Congress Finals at Acton Box Pro. We were awarded second place, which is fantastic. We are going to hear tonight from Mr. Mark Richatelli, who is the head coach of the team, as well as Mr. Bizidlo, and as well as a number of student participants in the team, who will have, when everybody gets situated, start by introducing yourselves. We need a few more chairs.
They can speak, but we can't count.
I don't think they award points for counting, Mark, unless it's your time.
The, I'm Mark Richatelli. The Shrewsbury Speech and Debate Team had another successful year. As you indicated, we culminated with a second-place finish at the state finals for the second year in a row. We're trying to claw our way back up to that state championship team position, and we'll get there again someday, but that was done with a lot of help from the students you see before you, who were each individual state champions, although some of them were in a group category, and I will have them introduce themselves to you and explain a little bit about what their category is, and then you can ask them any questions you may have. Will?
Hi, I'm Will Stavich is my last name. So, I was the director of the Multiple that won the state championship, the members of the Multiple, myself, Megan German, Lea DeHaemer, Sophia Pang, and Max Evers, and our performance was comedic interpretation of the 2017 movie "It" by Stephen King.
Comedic interpretation.
It was really good.
Yeah, I like to think it was pretty good. I guess you could say it was because it was the state champion, but yeah.
Hi, Megan German. I was in the Multiple, and I played Beverly.
Beverly.
I played Beverly in it.
Hi, my name's Lea DeHaemer. I was in the Multiple, and I played Richie.
Hi, I'm Sophia Pang. I was also in the Multiple, and I played Georgie and Eddie.
I'm Max Evers, and I was also in the Multiple, and I played Billy, and I think we had a really fun time with the Multiple, so I was really happy to be a part of something that went so far, so.
My name is Prisha Singh. I was not in the Multiple. I participated in a category called children's literature, where you portray a children's book in a fun and engaging way. I portrayed the piece "Stinky Cheese Man," sorry, "The Stinky Cheese Man" by John Chiesca, and yeah, I had a great time.
I'm Ahana Mukabhati, and I'm in radio broadcasting, and that category is basically exactly what the title sounds like. So, I'm sure you guys listen to like NPR or things like that in the morning, so basically...
What would make you think school committee members?
Yeah, so I try to put together a radio broadcast that is around like five minutes long, and I just piece together different news stories to be like, kind of like the Tom Ashbrook, I guess. I don't know what that is.
Hi, I'm Sharida Song, and I participated in prose reading, where you read or perform a piece of published work, and I performed "The Paper Menagerie" by Ken Leo, and it's a piece, a really touching story about like keeping your culture alive.
And many of these students are also heading off to Nationals next week and doing different events, but they're certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
And these are NCFL Nationals, I assume?
NCFL Nationals over Memorial Day weekend, yes.
Where will they be headed?
Washington, DC.
Excellent. Committee members, questions for the speech and debate team. Mrs. Fritz.
Very curious, and I'm going to ask Will, how did you pick the movie "It"? Thinking of that movie, that book, like how did you arrive at that?
And if I could throw on a follow-up, why the 2017 version as opposed to the 1990 mini-series?
He was showing his age.
It's the first thing I thought of.
Well, it was really the main driving force behind it was because I played Pennywise in the performance, and I think I do a much better impression of the 2017 version than Pennywise.
Okay, okay. That's fair.
Yeah, but as for why I picked it, um... I thought it would be funny if we did something that wasn't funny and made it funny.
Excellent.
If I had a nickel for every time I said funny, I'd have like four nickels. But yeah, I, there's something I think darkly funny about a scary movie, I like to think.
It's interesting, yeah.
Yeah, just a weird messed-up sense of humor, I guess.
Must have been engaging, because you did really well. Excellent. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzano.
I'm curious the skill set that you need to use when you're doing a group performance and when you're doing it individually, and how you take that skill set and perhaps apply it somewhere else. So, it's kind of a two-layered question, but they seem very different. We have a performance, we have prose reading, so I'm just curious how you approach it.
I would probably say I only, for states at least, I only worked in the Multiple, and I would say the biggest difference between like a group event is like the commitment that you really have with like your teammates. So, I had, I run track, and I had a track meet the day of the state tournament, and obviously, I had to miss that. Usually, I value track over speech, no offense, Mark. But, but I really, I really felt a commitment because we just put in hours and hours of work into like this, like into Will's baby, and we just really, I really felt a commitment that I didn't really feel in an individual event because it was all for me. So, I would say like I would do everything, doing everything for someone else was like something that was really different.
Speaking of that commitment, I've participated in Multiple before, and I feel like when you have to work on an individual category by yourself, when you find time at home late at night just before your bed, run through your piece, you can focus on it by yourself, but the kind of coordination that has to go through with meeting up with your team members, figuring out times outside of practice, it is a lot more commitment, I feel.
Yeah, speaking of skill sets you need for each different type of events, I think particularly for a group event, there's a lot more focus on the teamwork, and for Multiple, we're allowed to use like chairs and tables to help us kind of like build a theatrical set of a sort, so you can be really innovative and really creative with your ideas and how you use everyone involved in the piece. With individual, I think, like for speech in general, you want to give a focus on commanding attention and making sure that you're speaking well, obviously, and I think with individual, I think that's a lot more, like the judges look for that a lot more rather than a multiple, which is might be more fun or like an interesting aspect.
It's also a side benefit, educational benefit to Multiple. We prepare to compete, whether it's individually or as a group, but we also assign student directors to our multiples, and this is something that really gave Will a chance to do something that he also wants to do in his future as well, so that's not really part of the competition at all, but it is a nice benefit.
Mr. Wunske.
A quick question about the radio broadcasting area. Is that an individual competition, or is that also a team as well, or?
No, that's just an individual thing.
Okay, and is it something where you're delivering the news, or were there other alternatives?
Yeah, so we have 30 minutes of prep time. We get a packet with maybe like six or seven news sources, and then from that, we need to cut down the articles, and then we need to put it together into a radio broadcast that lasts between four minutes and 55 seconds and five minutes and five seconds.
Comes down to real precise timing, yes. Well, congratulations to you all. I know, Mark, you sent some great updates throughout the year.
Yes, thank you.
Just amazing accomplishments. It was a great year for you all, so congrats.
Thank you very much.
Further questions from the committee?
I have a question and then a comment. Were any of you ever extempers?
My sister's an extender.
We don't have any extempers up here, Jason, sorry.
That's not acceptable, Mark. You'll remedy that next year. So, my comment, I am a proud alum of the SHS Speech and Debate Program. I want to commend you all for the work that you do, and a comment that I want to make that I find myself making every year when the speech and debate team comes before us, and I want folks in the community to understand, we're still practicing one night a week, I would imagine.
Correct.
Our speech and debate program is competing against elite private schools where the resources that go into those teams, those kids have speech and debate as a class, where they receive individualized instruction every single day, and our Shrewsbury High Speech and Debate Team on one night a week of practice not only competes with those programs, but regularly reduces them to rubble and does phenomenal work, so kudos to all of you. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
I'd just like to congratulate all the students and Coach Richatelli. This is a program that has stood for many, many years for excellence, and it's for all the reasons Mr. Palich has stated. It's built really a strong culture, and I really enjoy the fact that there's a lot of self-motivation and student leadership, both self-leadership in terms of that motivation, but also, as you pointed out, students directing and taking on leadership roles and really building that as a student-led organization. So, you've brought a lot of distinction to your community, to your school as a result, and of course, all of you as individual state champions, it really is something that we are particularly proud of here in the school district, so congratulations. There's no doubt that it is a skill set that is going to serve you well for your entire life that you've developed, and no matter what you choose to do, and that's something that is a real side benefit in addition to all the other things that you get from being part of a team and experiencing that during your high school years. So, with that, again, congratulations. We do have a certificate for each of you that we'd like to give to you, and if you'd please come up, shake the committee's hand, and again, congratulations on your state championships.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations on having a nice job.
Congratulations, that's for you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see if he can...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mark. How many years have you been doing this?
Yep, I have a job.
Next, we're going to bring in some extempers, right?
Don't listen to him, Mark.
Outstanding.
Well done.
Excellent, thank you. The next item on our agenda is another time-scheduled appointment with our Project 351 ambassador for report and recognition. Project 351 is a youth leadership and service organization that develops a rising generation of community-first citizen leaders. It was founded by former Governor Patrick in 2011 and is now convened, of course, by Governor Baker. Project 351 fosters unity and strengthens the ethic of service through the engagement and enrichment of an eighth-grade ambassador from every city and town in Massachusetts, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Jones from Oak Middle School to introduce our ambassador this year.
Thank you. I am going to work really hard to make sure I pronounce Alina's last name correctly. This is Alina Shakur Kina. She exemplifies exactly what Project 351 stands for. Project 351 seeks an unsung hero from our school communities, from the eighth-grade community, and I would like to read just a little bit about what Alina's teachers have said about her and why she was nominated for the position. Alina is an academically talented student who has an exceptional capacity for kindness and acceptance. Through her, though her classroom presence is often quiet, her work in small groups shows her to be assertive and dynamic. Don't let her size fool you. Making the work of the group rise to high levels of work quality and engagement. Alina's presence is humble. She quietly seeks out challenges and constantly works to go above and beyond expectations. And a couple of things that she has done in her two years at Oak Middle School is, first, she has presented at the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Conference at Gillette Stadium earlier this year, representing Oak Middle School. Last year, she created two New England bird field guides and participated in the Massachusetts Audubon Society Bird-a-thon as a way to extend her project-based learning unit on ecology. She is also a Massachusetts Junior Central District musician, playing the clarinet. So, it's obvious, it was obvious to us that she's the kind of student for whom one merely needs to open the door, and she'll embrace the opportunities to lead and serve, which she did so well this year. Alina's classmates look up to her not only because of her kindness and compassion, but because she enables others to be their best. So, Alina's going to tell you a little bit more about Project 351 and her experience this year.
Thank you. Again, my name is Alina, and I'm Shrewsbury's Project 351 ambassador. Today, I will share with you a little bit about my experience of being an ambassador. I'll start by briefly explaining what Project 351 is and its mission. Project 351 is a nonprofit organization that inspires young people to serve. It unites eighth-grade students from all the towns and cities of Massachusetts to spread kindness and strengthen their communities. Through acts of service, this organization makes a tremendous impact on the entire state. As an ambassador, I was trained to become an effective leader through weekly conference calls and emails. Throughout the year, there were also six main events, three of which I already experienced. My air of service began with launch day, where I was introduced to the other ambassadors. Launch day prepared me for my first service project of the year, spring service. After spring service, all of the ambassadors met again at the leadership reunion to reflect on our experience. Later in the year, I will speak during Memorial Day and serve during the 9/11 tribute and fall service. Now, let's go back all the way to January, when I had my first experience in Project 351, launch day. All of the 372 ambassadors met at the John F. Kennedy Presidential Library, where we saw Governor Charlie Baker and First Lady Lauren Baker. I made many new friends, and in just a few hours, we were already growing as a community. Then, we split into groups and traveled to different service sites in the area. I served at the Martin Luther King Junior School in Dorchester. I prepared packages for many organizations, including Fresh Truck, and I helped to paint a mural on the wall in the cafeteria, which was a surprise for the students. I felt so glad to know that when the kids came back to school the next day, their school was a brighter and happier place. Soon after launch day, I began preparing for spring service. Spring service is a clothing drive for Cradles to Crayons that every ambassador organizes at their own town. To successfully lead a large service project, I needed to go through four basic steps: recruiting a team, organizing the team, spreading the word, and of course, serving. One of the most important steps was spreading the word, and Project 351 prepared me for it the most. I wanted to involve as many people as possible in the service projects, so I created posters to hang around the school, decorated collection bins, and wrote several announcements for the school and newsletter. I even reached out to the Shrewsbury Public Library and provided informational pamphlets for the public. Finally, on March 26th, I was ready to serve. In just two weeks, I needed to accomplish many things. First, I needed to collect the clothing from the collection bins and bring it to the storage room downstairs. Then, I sorted the items for quality and packed them into bags. Serving required a lot of hard work, but it was definitely worth it. I didn't expect to get so much feedback from my peers. I even reached out to the Shrewsbury Public Library and provided informational pamphlets for the public. Finally, on March twenty-sixth, I was ready to serve. In just two weeks, I needed to accomplish many things. First, I needed to collect the clothing from the collection bins and bring it to the storage room downstairs. Then, I sorted the items for quality and packed them into bags. Serving required a lot of hard work, but it was definitely worth it. I didn't expect to get so much feedback from my peers. Every morning, I would come to school and find the collection bins overflowing with books and clothing. My team members and family were always there to support me, even my little sister helped out. In the end, my dedication paid off and the results were shocking.
I knew that wasn't an Oak Middle School student.
Thanks to two hundred and seventy-four participants, I collected seventy-two bags containing a total of two thousand six hundred twenty-five items. And here's a little picture to put it in perspective. Thank you for inviting me here, feel free to ask me any questions.
Thank you, committee members, questions or comments? Mrs. Fritz?
Just a comment, thank you very much, a wonderful presentation, you're a very poised young lady. And I think sometimes we focus on the high school and a lot of the service hours at the high school, which is wonderful, but we forget that we're seeing a lot of service at the middle school and below. And you see an effort like this, that's a tremendous amount of work, and you did that with your friends and other students, but you probably spent a lot of time getting that all settled, right?
Yeah.
So, thank you, I think these are lifelong lessons, you know, I mean, you make a big impact on society when you do these things and starting younger, and we need to recognize it's really throughout the school district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, I really loved reading the report about you today, um, especially about the kindness and compassion that you showed, and I'm so proud that she was chosen, that, that's, those are wonderful characteristics and, um, it's demonstrated in your results. I'm curious what your takeaway from your experience in Boston was like. Wha- what was something important that you learned there that you didn't know before?
Well, um, one of the realizations that came to me, and it was part of the motto in our Leadership Reunion, which was held, um, last Sunday. And the motto was, "We are movement makers." And I realized that even a short little eighth grader can change their community to become a better place.
That's awesome.
Excellent, thank you so much, further comments or questions from the committee? Well, thank you so much for coming before us tonight, I know that we're all very proud of the work that you've done, uh, not only in your community service project, but also in representing Shrewsbury to a statewide organization, so thank you for your time and commitment. Uh, Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Thank you, uh, I think, uh, Project Three Fifty-One is an outstanding organization and it's really been one of the, it's, it's still relatively new, uh, in, in the state, and I think it's already having an impact. Not only what I'm seeing, uh, through, uh, their posts on social media, is not only the students who are selected each year, but the alumni go on to do, uh, lots of outstanding things, and I think the impact on the individuals, uh, like yourself, Alina, and, and those who have come before you, and those who will come after you, uh, it will be something that will be, uh, influencing you and the community wherever you end up, uh, probably, uh, going forward for your entire life. And that's something that is, is really special to be able to have that kind of impact to someone when, when they were in eighth grade. And then you having an impact on the community and those who, um, are in need, um, and also helping your peers see that that's an important thing to do. Um, so, it talks about an ethic, strengthening the ethic of service, that is something that is certainly part of our mission as a school district. Um, and to see, uh, you as a, as a shining example of that, uh, makes us all very proud, so again, congratulations, uh, well done. And, uh, if you would, uh, wouldn't mind coming up and shaking the hand of the committee, we have a certificate here for you to recognize your outstanding work.
Congratulations, Alina, yeah, nice job.
Good job, thank you. Thank you, the next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment related to the campaign for Shrewsbury Athletic Fields, uh, in accordance with School Committee Policy nine twelve.
Mr. Pallas, I want to see if our, our guests are here this evening yet, they may not be, I know the Ms. Piscotti, are they here yet? No, so, if you don't mind, maybe taking the next, uh, agenda item?
We're gonna hold this agenda item until a little bit later in the meeting, until our guests come for that. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment under curriculum related to the Shrewsbury High School Transitions Program. Shrewsbury High introduced a new program this year called Transitions, the aim of which is to support students returning to school from extended absence due to hospitalization or treatment for mental health issues, concussions, substance abuse treatment, uh, and more. Uh, we're gonna hear a report on the implementation of this program tonight from the Shrewsbury High staffers, uh, who implemented it, and they, uh, will introduce themselves, along with, of course, Mr. Pizdlo.
Hi, I'm Sue Donna Freo, I'm the Clinician and Program Leader for the Transitions Program.
And I'm Kelly McSweeney, I'm the Academic Coordinator for the Transitions Program.
Excellent.
And I certainly am, I guess, the window dressing tonight. Uh, I just wanted, if I could just interject for a minute, I, um, Kelly and Sue have done a fantastic job of, uh, to give the, maybe the community some background of where we landed when transitions. A number of years ago, uh, we approached the School Committee and the Finance Committee and the Town Selectmen, uh, to talk about some of the needs of students at the high school, and we put together a program to address some of the behaviors that we're seeing that were, uh, bubbling to the surface. And we came up, excuse me, with an idea around promoting academic success, uh, promoting academic connections and engagement, the PACE Program. That program, uh, had about twelve students cycle through, eleven of those twelve students who were at high, high risk or at risk for not graduating or not completing, uh, diploma, successfully completed their graduation requirements, obtained a Shrewsbury High School diploma. Another student actually went to Recovery High School and obtained his diploma through Recovery High School over in Rockdale. So, uh, I think, uh, that program has since, uh, served its purpose at the time and as we saw a burgeoning, uh, sense of needs with social, emotional health, uh, and also medical, the medically fragile community, whether it's concussions or through hospitalizations, that we needed to transform that program into something a little bit different. In the midst of the PACE Program, we started doing our investigations around a program called Bright, and it's out of Brookline Mental Health Center. Uh, we worked for about a year to try and figure out how we could make transition pace into our current transitions program and model after the Bright Program, so, um, when that was in place, we started to figure out we needed space, we needed staffing, so we did a lot of work behind the scenes, including Kathy LaRash, Greg Nevada, Nahuen, PJ O'Connell, Marahie Monopoly. Um, our student support team with Pam Johnson, Brenda Filier, Brenda Filier, I mean, the list goes on and on. All our school counselors, uh, worked on this, and we came to, uh, the realization that this was something that we needed to do and we started to build the program and we, um, appointed, for lack of a better word, Kelly to the program, and then we hired Sue from the outside, who, uh, has brought, uh, an absolutely fantastic, both them working and the synergy between them and helping and supporting our students has been fantastic. I will certainly let them, I don't want to steal the show here, but I can't, uh, neglect not giving them the kudos they deserve for the hard work and dedication to the students of the high school and how they've been instrumental in supporting families and students with really significant, significant needs, uh, and they're just, uh, two great, fantastic assets to the high school. So, I'll let them continue with their presentation, but I don't want to neglect, uh, my thoughts on, and some background for the, the audience around how we, how we arrived here.
Great, well, thank you for having us tonight, we're really excited to just talk about year one of the program. So, a little background, so we are part of the Bright Network. So, Brookline Community Mental Health back in two thousand and four partnered with Brookline High School, that was the first Bright Program. Since then, there are eighty districts in Massachusetts who have Bright Net, uh, Bright Programs. There are middle school programs and high school programs, and this year, there are talk of elementary programs, elementary school programs popping up in Massachusetts, so we are part of the Bright Network.
So, as was mentioned, we serve students that have, uh, missed school for five or more days due to psychiatric hospitalizations or for medical reasons. Um, additionally, we do have students that are transferred to us as a preventative measure. So, students that may not have missed the five days of school, but counselors and the student support team are recognizing that that student is struggling, had a loss of a parent, something is going on with that student where they're struggling with a crisis, and so, um, they would refer them to our program for additional support. So, this year, we had sixty-one percent of our students that were reentry, coming back from treatment or an absence, and we had thirty-nine percent that were referred as a preventative measure. So, our program has four different components. The academic component is, um, Kelly in her academic support room. So, when students come in, she works with communicating with the teachers, creating lists and organizing for them work that needs to be made up and helping them slowly reintegrate back into the classroom. So, there's a lot of support, there's a lot of tutoring that happens in her space, and a lot of communication with the student and the teacher. The direct clinical support to students, um, is my role. And when students first come back from a hospitalization or, um, a placement, I, we work pretty intensely for the first two weeks. So, that first two weeks is a time, especially if they've been in crisis, that I want to make sure that they're stabilized and, um, ready to be back in school. So, weeks three plus, we slowly start to, um, decrease those supports and help them with coping skills, um, day to day. The family engagement and support is really individualized for what families need. Um, some families have needed a lot of just resources, uh, knowing where and who to turn to for different supports in the community, um, in-home services, things like that. And then care coordination is really, again, individualized and working with families and providers, um, based on what the needs are of the family.
So, we sent you this data last week, and we got three new students this week, so, we're at fifty-four. Um, and we're actually anticipating two students entering the program next week. So, uh, we can certainly get you final numbers, um, by the end of the year, but we just anticipate that, you know, those, those numbers will continue to climb until June. Um, so, about thirty-five students have been referred for concussions. Twenty-four students, um, have been referred for a medical situation, so again, that is a surgery or an illness that kept them out of school for an extended period of time, those five consecutive days or even longer. Forty-one percent, um, and again, that number is a little higher right now, forty-one percent have been referred for mental health. Of that forty-one percent, twenty-six students have had a mental health evaluation, um, which might have happened through emergency mental health in the emergency room, um, there's been some substance abuse treatment that's happening with our students, a partial hospitalization, and an inpatient hospitalization.
This chart shows the breakdown of different student diagnoses, if you notice, there's some overlap between. So, um, often a student will come, come in with a concussion, but also may have some anxiety. Um, so this reflects the different needs that students have that are working with us in the program.
So, because we are part of the Bright Program, we collaborate with those eighty other s- school districts. So, for the purposes of tonight, we really, in just our first year data, we really just wanted to see what numbers other programs were experiencing. So, we did reach out, we didn't reach out to all eighty, but we, we kind of spot checked throughout the state, and we asked them, "How many students came through your program this year?" Um, and what percent of those students were mental health? So, our bars are gonna be a little bit longer, um, coming into the end of the year, we will have, again, you know, fifty-plus students, um, in the program. So, we are able to take really great data through Power School, and this is just a quick snapshot of a case study that we did. So, this is a student who had a seven-week transition in the program. And through Power School, again, we're able to track how much time they're in the classroom, how much time they're in our transition program, and how much time they're absent from school. So, this is a trajectory that we want for all of our students. We want kids to set goals to get back into the classroom and meet academic success as soon as possible. So, at seven weeks, this student reached alumni status. So, Bright Network encourages us to have students be in alumni status, which means that at any time after you've left the program, you are an alumni, and we encourage you to come back and ask for help and support, whether it be spend some time back in the academic classroom, support area, or seek clinical supports as needed. We don't want to shut our doors and say, "Thanks for coming," you know, we, we really want them, um, to remember the program and come back and use it. And alumni status also means that they could mentor, mentor other students in the program, and we encourage that too.
And this is that same student, and this is, uh, the CAFIS, it's a Child and Adolescent Functioning Assessment Scale. This is a tool that's used by the Bright Network as well. So, when students come in, they're rated, um, it's a checklist across different domains, schoolwork, home, community, behavior towards others. And a higher score is indicative of, uh, more severe impairment. So, a lower, uh, rating score means improved functioning. So, as you can see, across all domains, the student was functioning on a much, um, a much better level. Um, in terms of, um, you know, home, this measures things like, um, parent involvement and supervision to keep the students safe and, um, behavior towards others might be, um, sort of conduct type of things. So, when the CAFIS is used, it's rating those type of things across the board at the beginning and then the end.
So, this is just a sample of some of the systems that we have in place and documents that we have in place. Again, in collaboration with the Bright Network, we did not have to reinvent the wheel. There were so many resources available to us through our consult with, with, um, the Bright Program. So, these are all links, you can certainly click on them, we won't, we don't have to do that tonight, but every student comes into the program with a formal reentry plan that comes out of a meeting with the students, the support staff, and their families. Goals are set, guidelines are reviewed, um, so that formal plan happens for every student. The clinical tracking sheet is a document that Sue uses with her students for just daily clinical work or weekly check-ins. The sample work tracker is a Google Doc, so that goes out to all of the students' teachers, um, to the student and to the family, and it is a working document for assignments that are being waived, modified timelines that are being extended. It really enhances the communication with the student. The best part about this work tracker is that instead of the student, um, knowing the individual classwork that needs to be done, all of the teachers can see all of the classwork. So, you open up a document and it is a running tab, it is a running list, so the other teachers are able to better understand, "Wow, not only in my class does he have three assignments, but he's got three in every single one of his classrooms," and that's a lot. So, it really enhances communication with the teachers. The concussion guidelines is, again, a resource from the Bright Network, but it's used with the nurses. So, it's a color-coded chart. The nurses send that out with a concussion so that the teachers better can understand the symptoms that are associated with the concussion based on the level of concussion. So, it just is a guideline for teachers to support them in the classroom and sort of simple things that they can do to lessen, um, pain, to be honest. Um, and then wellness resources, Sue spent lots of hours, um, developing this wellness resource link, um, again, for students, for families, for even our staff, and it is on mental health, stress management, again, concussion, all kinds of wellness. It's a great link where, um, folks can access those resources.
And so, when we're ready to consider a student as an exit, a meeting exit criteria, we pull the team together and have a conversation if, if they're ready. Um, also, another link, we have lots of links tonight, there's, um, a student sample exit plan, we don't need to click on it, but basically, it's just an overview and a chart that indicates who will take care of what need that the student has moving forward. Um, as Kelly said, when a student moves from active to alumni status, they're welcome to come back in. I have a lot of students that we've moved through the program but continue to meet with me for counseling, um, as an unneeded basis as well. At the end, when students are exited out of the program, we send a parent survey, um, to families to hear what they have to say, and, um, this was another tool that was, uh, provided by Bright that we tweaked to our own needs. Um, and as you can see, we've gotten just a lot of positive feedback about support, about communication, um, a lot of themes around just really being thankful to have a liaison at the school and a place for their student to land, um, to have that communication when families are worried about their student going back into, um, into the school setting.
This is my favorite piece of data in the presentation. Um, in September, we weren't really sure, how many students are gonna access this program? And how far-reaching is this program gonna be in the building? And, um, I was rolling it around in my head, and then I finally, you know, got a list of faculty and I literally went through and, uh, made a hash mark next to each faculty, and this number is even higher with the three students that we have this week. So, ninety percent of our faculty have collaborated with us on behalf of a transition student. So, that means that they have been part of entry meetings, exit meetings, they have come into my academic space and done one-on-one work with a student, they have participated in a clinical session with Sue. Um, they're constantly communicating about the level of support that has needed. And I have to say, um, the faculty have been nothing but sensitive and understanding and flexible and professional, hands down. It is, they have been in the classroom waiting for these students to return and every day asking, "H- how can I support this student? What, what do you need me to do?" So, they are, they are to be commended.
Also part of the program, and, um, lastly, we've done a lot of outreach with local agencies, um, on behalf of the students, um, working closely and, uh, that care coordination that I was talking about earlier with Mass, um, DMH, Department of Mental Health, U Inc., The Bridge, um, doing some outreach to McLean Hospital, we went for a visit to West Borough Behavioral Healthcare Hospital, and more recently to the Kiva Center and Genesis Club, which are recovery centers for, for, um, young adults. Um, working closely with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, looking to provide, uh, another resource for families to access in the community.
So, we've been thinking about year two for a long time already, um, when we're developing, um, our program. So, these are just four- So these are just four goals that we have. We want to provide faculty with more information on trauma-informed classrooms. We want to give them more information on social, emotional learning and support. We want to increase communication with everyone who comes in contact with the students in the program. And that means after school with athletics and coaching and, and clubs and things like that. We want to provide teachers with tangible toolkit. So we have a vision of, of a toolkit with materials inside that can support a teacher around wellness and mindfulness and stress management. And again, that social, emotional piece in the classroom. And then we're always looking for ways to provide families with mental health resources, specifically to Central Mass. We want them to feel like they, they have the support that they need outside of school for their child.
We have brochures for you today. And on the back of the brochure, there is a QR code to the wellness resource that we share out to people.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Members of the committee, questions and comments. Dr. McGee.
Sue, very good presentation, terrific program. A couple of things, how close to capacity are you? What's your capacity versus what you've got now?
Yeah, so, you know, Bright, the network and the, the folks that consulted with us in developing the program have recommended that we stay at thirteen and leave a space of four vacancies just in case for whatever might happen over the weekend or, you know, happen to a student in crisis. So we stay pretty much at seventeen. We did hit a blip in the beginning of the year. We went to twenty-six. It was tough. We, just concussions and athletics, you know, and that might be a program goal for us too. We do, we do have a number of concussions.
So another piece here is, is that I get the impression that some are physical problems that have kept students out of school. Others are evolving emotional problems that people have either been out of school for or been identified in school. But some students act out, they end up being suspended or, or the like. Do you intervene in that group where they're heading towards suspension at all?
We don't really have students who have ongoing behavioral problems in school. You know, there is some comorbidity with mental health and we are seeing behaviors and we do try to assist in the classroom and with some specialists. But we are not a response to, to that type of behavioral intervention.
Because that CAFRS questionnaire seemed to have several components in there that look like they could present that way. It's kind of interesting. Do you, does your participation in this network, what's the value added to the participation in the network?
Yeah, it's been really useful, especially as a year-one program. So part of what the Bright provides is a toolkit that helped with different program materials. So we had, we had lots of different resources to draw from as we were developing our own materials that we found really useful. We had monthly phone calls with a Bright staff member. She came out to visit us periodically throughout the year. And we also have access to professional development through the Bright Network. So it's been really valuable for the professional development, for just keeping us, you know, when we had questions early on, we could reach out to them at any time and get some answers as we moved ahead.
Okay, thanks a lot, thanks.
Mr. Wunske. So a great presentation, a really valuable program. Just curious on the mentor piece. I know it's early, but have you had former students that have gone through this program come back and, and work with students that are going through it right now?
To a slight degree. Like you said, it is early. We've had students that, you know, for example, may during an unstructured time like lunch, need some companionship. So we've asked a student to come back and connect with another student.
Yeah, I mean, it's year one, so we have targeted some students, that case study that you saw. She's just a perfect example of someone that we would call on next year, you know, and try to, you know, she will be an upperclassman, so maybe mentor, you know, a, a ninth grader or a tenth grader when they're returning from, from a mental health situation, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's so impactful to have somebody who has gone through it, a mentor, somebody who is going through the, the program. Then you mentioned the sports, like the student athletes and the sports injuries and concussion-related injuries. Is this something that would be kind of a referral, you know, if, once that's identified on the field or in, in the sports event? Would that become like a referral to this program automatically?
Right, not, not so much automatically. So I'm sure nurses will have data for you later on on their concussion numbers, which are much higher than ours. And that means that our concussions go through the nurse's office. So they partner with Walter or just from the outside specialists when the student has a concussion. They might see some frequent flyers in the nurse's office and kids are reporting symptoms. You know, the lights are too bright in class, my head hurts, I can't do a full day, maybe too much screen time. And they might say, wow, this, this level of intervention is, is beyond us at this moment right now in the nurse's suite. So they'll walk the student up and we'll partner with the nurse's office around the supports the student needs around the concussion. There is not a picture of our space, but I had the luxury of lowering the lights in my space and having some comfortable areas where students could, could rest when they have concussions. We don't want them sleeping, we want them to stay awake. But we want to make their learning environment just a little more comfortable, so our space allows that.
Actually, while we're doing questions, Todd, if you wouldn't mind clicking on the online brochure, this is a link that nurses will send out to families in the event that a student is presenting with concussive symptoms to give some, just to give some information about what the program is. Does that work for you?
It's working.
So there are some pictures of our space on, on, on there. We, we try to keep it very inviting. We try to have it be a space that, like Kelly said, especially for the concussion students, is low light, it's very mellow, it's very quiet.
The way you love those old, Mrs. Fritz.
Did you get it? Yeah, there you go.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yeah, I think it, you know, this highlights a need that, I mean, years ago probably existed, but we didn't do anything, you know, about. And I think it's, also shows what students deal with day to day. I do have a question on the care coordination. So you're coordinating maybe with parents, but then through medical therapists or psychiatrists. Are you finding that there's a significant percentage of students who are getting care outside of what we can provide in the school?
Yes, typically when a student comes through for mental health purposes, they either are very well-connected or are about to be well-connected. So at the intake meeting, we get releases to speak to outpatient therapists and psychiatrists and really make those phone calls about what the outpatient therapist is working on with that student and how we can help support that. Oftentimes, students present differently in school than they do with their outpatient therapist. So it's also helpful to just collaborate on that and get a better picture of what the student is. I am very blessed that in my position, I see students every day. So like I said, when students first come in, we're meeting every day, I'm checking in with them, I'm asking them questions about safety. So we can quickly develop a therapeutic rapport where oftentimes in the community, they're only seeing their therapist one time a week. So sometimes I have a lot more information at the onset that I can then pass to the outpatient therapist. And we have other cases, that's been a nice trajectory where students have seen me more intensively. And now with DMH in place and in-home services, I'm able to kind of pass that care over directly more to the outpatient providers.
Excellent. And as you were talking about, you know, distribution of information about students with teachers, is there an authorization process? It just made me think of that when you were talking about it. How do, how do the parents or, because if they're minors, allow that authorization? Is there something that we do?
We're working on that.
Okay.
So certainly when we have, when we talk with providers, there's a release that we get. And typically, parents sign off on the release. We put, we send a release to, to them. They send, bring the release to their provider, provider fax that release back, so we can then start the collaboration with their provider. But typically, it's a conversation that happens with parents. And then the idea of coordinating those services, I think Sue hit the nail on the head. What we, what they see outside might not present what happens at the high school, but it's certainly a piece of the puzzle to help us address the whole, the, the whole student and the, and the challenges that they see. So we've had that process in place for years where we've worked closely with pediatric psychiatry, psychologists and therapists partnering with families and getting releases to talk to those healthcare providers to help us. And, and families want to do that.
Oh, absolutely. But in, I'm thinking more in-house, within the school, if you need to talk to a teacher or a group of teachers. Is that something I assume that the parents are allowing to be done?
It's delicate. We have HIPAA guidelines that we need to follow and we're working with nurses around that. And sometimes the students themselves will go right ahead and, and make an appointment after school with a teacher and disclose what they're struggling with. Sometimes less is better to start, you know, and really just a little bit of what the student needs as far as their level of support. It's, it's a balance.
Yeah, right.
At the beginning of the year, we did a presentation to faculty about the transitions program. So sometimes it's an email to say, this student is now using transitions program, so we will be reaching out to you regarding work. And so that indicates that the student is requiring that additional support for whatever reason.
Right.
And, and part of mental health awareness is that a mental health situation and a hospitalization for ten days in that case should really be the same as a broken collarbone where the student was out and, and hospitalized for that reason. So we're, we're working on that.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzano.
I'm really excited and grateful about this program. I have children who suffered medical issues and were out of school for long periods of time and there wasn't a re-entry program. And I understand the stress and anxiety that goes along with the parent and the children about adjusting. And this is fantastic. And the people I've talked to who have used it, their children have used it, are so impressed. And it's done such good work, so thank you so much for that. I am curious about the reception of the student population that's not using the program. Are they aware of it? What is their feeling about what's going on in that room? I, I don't know if you have an impression.
Yeah, so again, it is, it is a goal for next year. I, I think of a couple of things. The program does have a referral process, so we're not a drop-in center. Although we are right off of the media center, so we do have a high-traffic area. And we are very enticing with our low lights and our comfy chairs. And we are very warm and inviting. So we do get some traffic and kids will literally walk in and say, what is this? So we're finding that balance between, you know, getting the word out to other students, but we, but we do have a referral process, so.
I just want to express personally my strong support of this program and my thanks to the both of you for the work that you're doing. I have the good fortune in my day job to work for a nonprofit organization that helps a client population, a substantial portion of whom are struggling with either one or the other or combination of mental health and substance use disorder. And I know that while the focus in our societal conversations is often on treatment and access to treatment, that once through treatment, the process of rebuilding one's life is extremely complex and often takes a much, much longer time. So I want to thank you for what I know are some very, very hard days with students who are trying to rebuild their lives and get back to a place where they can be independent and in pursuit of their academics. Just a comment there, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sword.
Thank you. I certainly also want to echo the thanks. Anytime educators take on a new assignment, there's an enormous amount of work involved, but to start a program from scratch, especially one that is as critically important and sensitive as this one, takes skill and dedication. I greatly appreciate the work that both of you put into that. I also want to take the opportunity, in addition to thanking Mr. Bzidlow and the administration at the high school for his support. Mrs. Belcedo is here this evening as well. And, and when she came on board last year, one of the very first recommendations she made to us as a leadership team was the importance of getting a, an adjustment counselor position at the high school and considering a program like this and to see it come to fruition in such a short time. That is also important and want to recognize Mrs. Belcedo's leadership around this as well. We're serving students who have very particular needs in a better way than we were a year ago. That makes me feel good. I, I know that there are other opportunities and I know the program will continue to evolve. And I'll be very interested to, to see how, as you mentioned, other districts are, are moving this type of program into middle level, perhaps even elementary. We certainly have needs at other levels other than the high school, but this is, this is the right place to start. And I think that we have a better school district as a result of this program being in place. And, and again, appreciate the hard work and, and the skill that you've brought to it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, under Finance and Operations, is our annual report with regard to school safety and security. We're going to hear from Mr. Stephen Rocco, who's our coordination coordinator of transportation, safety and security. Mr. Rocco's served in that position since 2014. And tonight we'll hear a report that includes information on our standard response protocols, emergency radio communications, emergency management tabletop exercises and training. So, Rocco, thank you.
Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all again tonight. It's, I think, our fourth get-together on the overview of safety and security throughout the Schuylkill School District Safety and Security Program. Tonight, I also have my colleague, Brian LaRue, who will also be participating in giving some technological and explanation on some public address systems that we recently deployed and installed in the three of our school sites and looking to also install in a fourth school site later this summer. I look at this slide right here and to me, this is the basic fundamental building blocks of our overall safety and security program in the school. Every year, we continually, throughout the year, look, our goal is to enhance and strengthen the school district's overall security posture. We're always looking at best practices, trends, evolving technology. Along dovetailing right into that, we always look to adapt and approve upon emergency standard response protocols to identify and neutralize any emerging threats, either man-made or natural. A big cornerstone, again, piece of this is continuing training and drills which increase with complexity and challenges. We, we like to, this year, we've been doing unannounced drills, we've been putting some twists in the drills. We've been doing drills where kids are all over the place in the schools, whether it's inside the schools, whether it's outside the schools. And it allows for the teachers to better cope and understand when they're in a situation, situational awareness, processing what they're seeing, and also helps with their decision-making, which is paramount today in dealing with these. And just get out of that mindset of something happens, just kind of hunker down and wait. So there's a lot of independent thought and decision and freedom to make decisions. So that's really a big piece that we're driving home to staff and students. And obviously continue to leverage technology, whether it's video surveillance cameras or communications equipment. And this past year, it's been the public address systems, which give us some phenomenal remote capabilities and also brings some fantastic capabilities so that the staff in the schools will make an emergency announcements. The school video surveillance cameras, we have a fully robust program we've been working on for the last couple of years. It's fully deployed and installed throughout all our school locations. We have remote capability on 24/7 camera access through the local area network, the LAN. Both the fire department and police department have camera displays in their dispatch areas. We signed an MOU with them this year. They're basically, for lack of better words, allowed to view what's going on when in conjunction with an emergency-type situation, they're not routinely monitored or looked. It just gives them the ability for some situational awareness. If an event was to happen at one of the schools, that they could prepare better in response to that prior to getting to the school. It also gives the fire department at night, if they have an alarm going off on one of the schools, they can look at the zone that they're receiving the alarm from and see if it's a sprinkler head, a faulty smoke head or an actual fire. So it gives them a better understanding of what's going on prior to arrival. The surveillance camera, we believe significantly improves our overall security operations at the respective school sites. The system is very user-friendly. We've designed it with a high resolution rate, so we can actually identify people and we don't have to base it on mannerisms or clothing choices. It's, it's a great system. And overall, I think it assures the staff, students, teachers and parents that appropriate measures are in place and we're catering to ensure their safety and security. The standard response protocols, the SRPs, they're fully ingrained and, and the staff and teachers and students are highly proficient. We, we exercise and drill these throughout the year. Again, continuous training, associated drills, increased complexity and scope, unannounced fire drills, active shooter, evacuation, obstructed exit ways. And again, we do like the active shooter drills, the evacuation drills when people are outside all over the school, transitioning in between classes. It's no longer when everyone's securely seated in their classroom, in their seat, and then it makes it easy. So we're really challenging them and making it as real-life as possible. This year, we spent an awful lot of time, myself and the fire, police department, on going, meeting with every school administrator and going through their school and actually identifying safe zones for severe weather, i.e. tornado. uh and going through their school and actually identifying safe zones for severe weather, i.e. tornadoes, where we've looked at uh structurally what would be the uh the safest possible locations to shelter or evacuate to in a school. And we've actually uh drilled that, where we've put, taken all the staff and the kids in the school, dumped them, put them in the location, so we know physically we are able to uh, they're able to fit into these spaces. Um, uh, you know, relatively easily and safely. The emergency management tabletop exercises, we spend a a great deal of time doing these. In theory, it it allows uh administrators, central office staff, uh, department heads, town manager, fire and police first responders to conduct an exercise similar in this room, informal, uh supposedly low-stress. So we can work through our protocols, how we're gonna respond, work out all the what-ifs, have a two-way discussion and really work out the uh the nitty-gritty details of of if and when something happens. We cover man-made and and also natural-type disasters. This year, we really focused on um the uh parent-student reunification process where in the event of uh an unfortunate incident at one of the schools where we have to have the parents, we have to go to another site, we have to have parents show up, and we have to safely and a hundred percent account for releasing them back into the custody of their parents. So we did two large uh town-wide scenarios. One happened to be April, um, February fifteenth, the day after Parkland. We had that uh planned months in advance and it was on, it it was ironic, the uh timing of that. And that that drill uh really hit home to a lot of people. Um, on top of that, myself and the police department um went out to each school with their crisis management teams a- and their uh head administrators. And we sat down and we did many tabletop exercises at every single school site to deal with the nuances, to work out, to make sure that the administrators had their crisis management teams. Each had an assignment, uh, i.e. they might want to recommend having a reunification team leader because that principal or administrator is gonna have their hands full with first responders, access to the school, information about the school, correspondence in the central office. So we really carved out uh detailed job descriptions and expectations of people on the crisis management team. And the feedback on that was uh extremely well-received. And of course, we're gonna continue to conduct and develop uh table talks in the future. The building assessment teams or BAT teams, as we call them, we conduct these every year with uh building department, police, fire, and myself. We go out to each and every school. We meet with the uh administrator or principal. We identify and improve high-risk areas in school building where potential problems or emergency situations might occur, might occur. We continue what we call target hard- hardening, strengthening the overall security posture of a specific school location. Um, in years past, it was the video surveillance cameras, redoing our emergency response protocols. This year, uh, Brian will speak to more in an upcoming presentation shortly on the uh public address systems that we put in the past year, which were at Patton, uh Parker Road and Coolidge. And we anticipate this spring uh installing and deploying one at the uh Spring Street School. Um, and and the deficiencies or the improvement areas that we do find, uh, I generate um a a report for each school and that's pushed up the line to the uh building superintendent, Bob Cox, for uh corrective action and uh to take care of whatever the issues are. Training is a is a critical piece of uh a- any security program. We continue our tactical training with first responders. Uh, do a lot of training with the police department. Every year, we rotate during the school vacations. This year, we did a lot of active shooter and tactical entry and uh training at Oak Middle School. Uh, the year before that, I believe it was at uh Sherwood. So i- it allows the police to be familiar with the schools that may not have been in the school before or as they hire new officers that have never been in the school system or didn't go to school in the school system. It gives them a building familiarization and uh it really helps with their response time and tactics. Um, and obviously, we're gonna continue uh routinely to do our uh big drills with the lockdown, lockout, shelter, evacuation and the reunification. The future of safety and security in schools, again, we're gonna continue to adapt and to build upon our emergency SRPs to meet the challenges of emerging threats. Uh, we're gonna continue to institutionalize and standardize our communications, equipment and training, enhance and leverage tech- technologies wherever possible. And a big piece of this and most important piece in a lot of the schools is really our most proactive piece, and and that's the key to any security program, is to get out in front of the problem before it develops and uh do some preemptive work with the uh, continue to support the student uh support teams and proactively uh prevent violence and inappropriate behavior in the schools. Before we move on to Brian, I'd just like to add a a lot of the conversation and dialogue that I saw on TV following Parkland. I I really have to give ourselves credit. A lot of things that they recommended that the schools do to tighten up their security, to deal with active shooters, best practices. Uh, some of these pieces were in place before I got to the school district. Now, it's a credit to Dr. Sawyer and the PD and and the people that had that effort, and we've come a long way since. I've been on board to implement the video surveillance that we have. Uh, I credit the PD for um, you know, dedicating two resource, armed resource offices to the school. So I really believe, and I'm not just saying this, it's not lip service, I really believe and credit the town and and the people before me, that they had the forward thinking. So, cause a lot of things that they're recommending, we've already done for the last few years, and we continue to be out front of that. So um, I think that's a credit to our overall program.
Uh, just to dovetail on what uh Mr. Rocco was saying about the uh new PA systems, uh, there are a few, you know, you typically typically think of a PA system as just announcing, making announcements to the building. Uh, there are some new features that are available now uh with some of the advances in technology. Uh, one of the bigger ones that we have is the ability to remotely initiate uh a lockdown or a lockout. And so that, for instance, central office, if they had heard of a situation in town, they could decide to um remotely pull pull up this wa- a page here uh on the network. They can choose which building they wanna, building or buildings they want to lock out or lock down and send that command to the PA system in that building. And in the building, uh, the students would hear a recording of their principal uh with the standard response protocol language instructing them on what to do. Um, th- that also puts the PA system into a uh emergency mode where it would sus- suspend any bells that maybe hap- uh scheduled to happen, that kind of thing. Um, there's an, the ability to initiate this via uh administrators' uh mobile phones if needed. They can also make announcements uh via their mobile phone if needed in an emergency. And in addition to some of the other things that I mentioned, uh, when the system goes into this emergency mode, it'll send emails and texts to designated staff members, administrators and across the district, so that everybody's aware of of uh of uh what's going on. Actually, that happened to be the last slide anyway. One more, actually. The um, ju- just the current status of it, we've uh been implementing it as uh both as funding has become available and as PA systems have uh needed replacement. Uh, so they're already in place at Parker Road, uh Coolidge and and Patton. And uh before the summer, we'll be uh implementing at Spring Street.
Thank you both. Questions and comments from the committee. Mrs. Fritz.
Um, just a comment. Thank you very much. And I think what Mr. Rocco said, we've always kind of been ahead of the curve. And then when you came along, I think we really went ahead of the curve on that. So thank you very much. Um, after the February shooting, there was a lot of chatter on social media about, well, what should we be doing? What should they do? People saying, I think your um presentation is something, unless, and Dr. Sawyer may have already done it, it should be on the school department website for people to look and see all those different things we already have in place. Because, you know, social media has so- some legs and people are getting information that I don't think was accurate. So I would love to see that posted.
Mr. Wensky.
I'm always impressed. I mean, you've 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 presented the last several years. I'm always impressed with the depth of this program and the continuous training drills, uh, even, you know, this year, it sounds like you did more randomized training as well. Um, and also finding those safety zones within the schools, especially uh the capacity that we're at within the schools. It's good to know that we're doing that, that those those types of things. Um, with regards to the uh the upgraded PA uh installations, I noticed that we're in three schools now, four school coming up in spring. Is there, is there like a licensing fee by school or is there like obviously costs associated with that?
Yeah, there's a uh, obviously, there's an equipment cost uh for the upgrade equipment. Uh, not necessarily a separate licensing fee, but it's between the equipment.
Sure.
Uh, th- they can be retrofitted, it can be retrofitted into an existing system, uh, but there is also a cost to that as well. But it kind of depends on the building, what's in place currently in the building, how old that system is, uh, in terms of what the exact costs are.
Sure. And just to follow up to that, do we have a sense of when all nine schools would have this technology?
Uh, I think it depends on the funding that's available. Um, I'm not sure if there's a currently a specific timetable.
Right. Thank you.
Dr. McGee.
I think parents can take a great deal of comfort knowing that we have programs like this and people like you uh implementing them. I'm really impressed, not just with the design of these programs, but with the the detail about implementation, the the desktop exercises, the the rehearsals and everything. That really is a a very comforting approach to know that you're following the details and making sure that everything works. It's really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gonzano.
Oh, what I'd follow up with that is this um depth of collaboration that is occurring uh between the school department and and fire and police. And I think that was one of my takeaways from the Parkland um incident. I- is that there perhaps wasn't always enough collaboration and communication between all all the different um departments. And and I feel really good that that's here in Shrewsbury. Um, you're a part of that and and part of it, like you said, was going on um previously. So I I think that's a strength that we have here in Shrewsbury. It's a definite plus.
We have phenomenal, phenomenal relationships. I mean, it's really, really seamless and it makes things so much easier when everyone's on the same page, everyone's volunteering to help and they do help and show initiative on their own. So I mean, the relationships are, I mean, that's that's the majority of the battle and we have outstanding, outstanding relationships.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for your part in that.
Couple of, uh, well, a specific question, then a broader one. Uh, Mr. LaRue, with the remotely initiate lockdown process, I do notice that, you know, amongst options during uh on this technology, I see lockdown, lockout, all-clear. I'm also seeing spare two and spare three. What are those? Are those just sort of drill scenarios? Are those?
Those are available for future use if we need them. Um, the SRP.
Spare as in in reserve.
Exactly.
I gotcha.
Uh, yeah, exactly. So the uh, the SRP leaves room for um specific direction in terms of what to do in certain incidents. So we couldn't preload them all in terms of pre-recording and that kind of thing. So, but if there were additional instructions that we wanted to preload in the future, we could do that.
I also want to commend echoing what some of my colleagues have said, the level of collaboration with our first responders here in Shrewsbury, the Shrewsbury Fire Department, the Shrewsbury Police Department. I do have a question. I'm curious if if there are any national law enforcement organizations, be it the FBI or any other crime or criminal justice-focused institution we get information from. I know as we have across the United States, you know, distressingly regular mass casualty incidents in schools and incidents of violence in schools, while that is certainly, you know, a horrible tragedy, I do know that from each of these incidents, there's something to be learned, uh, and there's potential scenarios to game out. I'm curious, do we have a vehicle to receive updates on best practices or what might have been done in a particular scenario? Do we rely on the police department? Do we get information from the FBI or some sort of other uh law enforcement entity to help keep us current? Cause I do know you do a lot of work to keep our drills current.
Yeah, I mean, we we um, there's many sources of that typ- type of information. I mean, based on the local state police. Um, I mean, I still have far-reaching contacts back in local law enforcement, both here and worldwide. Uh, my wife is also in law enforcement, so uh people that we know also feed us information, which is great. Um, yeah, we we have various uh means to to get this information and we're always, and even online. Um, I'm always researching and looking and and reading and just lessons learned from different things. And are we ahead of these? And um, but again, to reiterate, I mean, we're so far ahead of the curve. Um, nothing's a hundred percent.
Of course.
But we are so far ahead of the curve that it's really a a, you know, a tribute to the school department and and everyone that makes that work. So, um, but we do get all sources of information from time to time. They also ho- host conferences. Uh, the FBI holds a conference with their Joint Terrorism Task Force with the uh local um uh Attorney General. And they provide the la- unclassified latest and greatest uh information, threat analysis and lessons learned and best practices and what the future brings. So we do have access to that on a routine basis. And we like to incorporate that also in our exercises.
May I just quickly to that, the 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 Department of Homeland Security has had some uh good information relative to school safety and protocols and actually provides some online training that we utilized. Uh, we we did a training, not this year, but the previous year around incident command systems uh with the fire department and the police department. So um that the school administrators were familiar with and understanding some of the language and the approach that first responders use if they're setting up uh a command center on a critical incident and what kind of rules and what kind of uh, what to expect. Uh, but uh, that's that's another source that we have used in the past as well.
Let's close by saying thank you for the work that you do. I know that it's not possible to prepare for every possible scenario. I know that there's an inherent risk in living and there's always gonna be something that, you know, we're gonna have to react to. Uh, but I know that you are making Shrewsbury Public Schools as prepared as we can reasonably and conceivably be. So thank you for that. Dr. Sword, anything else to add?
Thank you. Uh, I I will uh underscore the importance of the relationship with the Shrewsbury Police Department, the Shrewsbury Fire Department, Chief Hester and Chief Vona, uh, have been excellent partners in this work. Um, the school resource officers, Officer Mark Hester at the hu- based at the high school, Officer uh Scott Mensur based at Oak but is responsible for the elementary level as as well. Um, that that is a resource that uh I feel very fortunate that we have and have had uh for many years now. Um, and it does make a difference. We know proactively it makes a difference and and it also uh creates um a a a better security posture for the schools, uh, certainly. Um, and uh, as Mr. Rocco, Mr. LaRue, I mean, in terms of technology, um, the the school committee knows on one of the uh new additions to the budget that uh was at risk under a tier-three cut and and will remain in the budget, um, assuming town meeting uh successfully passes it, i- is that uh some additional technical help. And we, you know, Mr. LaRue showed some statistics that show we were behind there generally. Uh, but one of one of the reasons, and we've had this discussion, Mr. LaRue uh has has rightfully pointed out that not only in the educational sphere and the administrative sphere, uh, but in our safety and security sphere, technology has become critically important. Um, video is digital video and we need to the the support of the IT department to make sure that that's working properly. And you saw this evening with these new PA systems we're putting in, um, those also require uh the uh setup and and the support of of our IT department. Um, so continuing to realize that investments in in IT is not only about teaching and learning and not only about running the school district day-to-day, uh, but also about keeping our schools uh safe and secure. Um, and then, as was stated, Mr. Rocco, uh, his work, his experience in law enforcement, um, the the ongoing collaboration and the specificity with which uh we're doing this work uh gi- should give the community a a good sense of of uh, a good feeling about what we are trying to do. Uh, again, uh, they're unfortunate, it's unfortunate that we have to spend some of the time that we do. Um, but uh, and and we want to do that in a reasonable way. Uh, but to have uh someone who's focused on that uh for a large uh majority of the time, uh, in addition to handling the school buses, as you know, which is also part of Mr. Rocco's responsibility, uh, that that's important for us and appreciate his efforts throughout the year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is under Old Business, uh, and that is a discussion with regard to a town meeting warrant article to ban polystyrene and the potential impact on the school department. By way of background, citizen petitioners have requested that an article be placed on the annual town meeting warrant, which of course it is on the warrant, uh, that prohibits the dispensing of prepared food and disposable food service con- containers made from expanded polystyrene in Shrewsbury. At our previous school committee meeting on May ninth, we received two presentations, one from Mr. Collins and Ms. Nichols uh to give a presentation on the potential impact that the passage of this warrant article would have on the school department. We also received a presentation from the petitioners to explain their advocacy on behalf of the polystyrene ban. We further held a public hearing on this topic and received feedback from members of the community. Since that time, leading up to tonight's meeting, we have continued to receive feedback via email from members of the community on this topic. And I'll pause here just to express my and our thanks to members of the community who offered their feedback uh on this topic. We heard quite a bit uh about this issue on both sides from members of the community. So I do want to thank everyone who took the time to express their views to us at this time. I do want to open this up to a discussion of school committee members now that we've had time to process this information, see where people are living. There are a number of issues before us as the warrant article itself. Uh, there's uh styrofoam and its presence in Shrewsbury Public Schools. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to committee members for discussion. Dr. McGee.
So, this is complicated. And uh, I would say that if the proposal was just, we'd like to cut down waste, we'd like to cut down uh litter in Shrewsbury, we'd like to move to reusable trays and and uh utensils and everything in the schools and the schools already had the necessary equipment and everything, um, I'd be on board for that. I like the idea of having reusables. I like the idea of having, of of not throwing things away after a single use. And that appeals to me a lot. When we have other elements in there and I try to look at them, uh, it becomes a little more foggy for me. There were issues brought up regarding the health risks of polysty- styrene, and I have looked at the medical at the medical literature. I've tried to look at various institutional websites with regard to the evidence that they have and the pronouncements that they've made. I've initiated contact with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, haven't gotten a clear answer yet from them, but I will follow through on that. But I'm attempting to gather the information that I can. And having been exposed to the medical literature for over 40 years, I come to appreciate the fact that suggestive doesn't, isn't the same as cause, that if one organization says that they support a particular position, it does not necessarily mean that all organizations do. And that some increase in risk, particularly depending on the means of surveying the population and the level of risk we're talking about, may turn out in the long run to not be an increase at all. I could spend the rest of our meeting just talking about good ideas that turned out to be not such good ideas over the long run. And at this point in time, I haven't found convincing evidence that there is a significant health risk associated with using the polystyrene. And so those who feel that they're, that that is a major issue here, I'm just not convinced of it at this time. I will continue to look into it because I'm certainly interested. The other piece of this has to do with pollution and whether we are generating a pollutant with the polystyrene. And combusted materials, particularly if it's very hot, you know, over 1,000 degrees, what we end up with is overwhelmingly CO2 and water with regard to combusting polystyrene. And as you know, we use that to generate energy. But the other part of this equation is, is that we may not have as an alternative going to washable trays and washable anything. We may have as an alternative going to compostable materials, which we heard are going to increase costs a little bit, but not a lot. And the other part of that, which wasn't modeled into the scenario, if I understand it correctly, was that if they're compostable materials, we need a compost heap. We need to have trucks pick those up and dump them in the Shrewsbury compost heap or however that is going to be done. We would be depending upon the town government to generate that sort of facility and that sort of service, which would add additional costs, but also is another variable that may not get passed. We may decide to use combustible materials and they get thrown in the garbage and they get sent off and burned. And the net density of those materials is substantially greater than that of polystyrene. So it may end up being that we're generating more CO2, burning these combustible materials than we would have by burning polystyrene. It is not clear to me at all on that one. But by the same token, I really like the idea of cutting down waste. I like the idea of not throwing something away after a single use and I would be very supportive of the notion of trying to use reusable materials to try to conserve and generate less waste. So I'm in the middle here and in the end, I'm going to have to, as a town meeting member, vote yes or no. But I don't want to sort of generate a strong argument by taking a bunch of areas that are sort of questionable and turning them into something that is, that reflects certainty that I don't think exists at this time.
Mr. Wensky.
Yeah, I'm riding the fence too, just to be honest about this. You know, last week, I, you know, my, one of my main concerns was cost and the impact to the operation. Still a valid concern. You know, this is a self-funded service, right? So it's funded through the fees collected through the services provided to 6,100 students, right? Over lunches that span 25 minutes on average. So, you know, there's some, there's some concerns there. I don't, you know, I want to make sure that that's not, you know, clouded by the health concerns that were brought to our attention last week and, you know, something that we should continue to, you know, just consider. But certainly, you know, I think it's, it is a complicated issue. You know, I don't have a, I mean, I'm still thinking through it, to be honest with you. But yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yeah, and this petition is going to be brought before the town meeting, which is a legislative body and they will decide whether or not to ban or to, you know, defeat the article. And if it's passed, then we will have to deal with that and figure out what that is. I don't think it's a simple answer. There's a lot to consider. Like Dr. McGee said, you know, there's articles for pro and against, you know, what it means, what it doesn't mean with styrene. So I think there's a lot to look at, but I think we, if it passes, we will have to deal with it. We have to look at it for, from a lot of angles, including the health angle, but also the full cost picture. It's not simple. I think passing on costs to consumers, we can't say it's minimal. We have to really look at what that full picture is. Some of it could be town costs that are really not school costs. So is it going to be something that we're going to have to take the full for? Is it going to be something that town is taking the cost? So there's a lot to look at. And, you know, if it doesn't pass, I think it can, we can then talk about it as a committee. Is it something we should look at as a policy and really put time and effort in? So I think waiting for town meeting to see what happens, we're all town meeting members. We will all vote on it at town meeting. But as far as the, as a school committee, I think we have to wait and see what the legislative body decides first.
Mrs. Consano.
Yeah, I think because the warrant article impacts the entire town, not just the school department, I'm totally comfortable waiting until after town meeting to figure out what our next steps might be. I think it might be helpful if we gave the chair some opportunity to express some of the impacts that Patrick Collins and Beth Nichols brought before us, just in case there is, are there questions for the school committee? So I would propose something like that. I'm going in, I think, to town meeting leaning towards a ban. That's my environmental feeling about it, but I'm still, you brought, you raised a lot of issues that still have to be figured out. I'm looking forward to a very healthy and vigorous debate on Monday or Wednesday, whenever we get to it in the, in the article. But I will say that the students were very persuasive in some areas that have caused me to do a lot of deep thinking on this issue.
So thank you, colleagues. My personal opinions on this as an individual committee member, I'm not sitting on the fence, I was torn in half by it. I see before us two distinctly separate questions that both merit are addressing. The first is a specific warrant article, a specific article with specific language that's going to come before town meeting next week. But then I also see the issue of styrofoam and whenever we think of the warrant article, we are significant purchasers of styrofoam. Where I come down on the warrant article is I don't feel it is appropriate for this committee to take a formal position on it for the simple reason being that while I know the petitioners have expressed at various points that they did intend for the warrant article to come at Shrewsbury Public Schools, it is not specific to Shrewsbury Public Schools. It involves retail businesses and the entire community and this committee, it is not the province of school committee to tell retail businesses what to do. This committee does not have a precedent of doing that. We did not weigh in on the plastic bag ban. We did not weigh in on recreational marijuana. And for those reasons, I do not consider it appropriate for us to now assume the mantle of weighing in on something of that nature. Having said that, I also recognize that of all of the entities in town government, we as Shrewsbury Public Schools, we are the ones who are purchasing styrofoam. And as an individual, as an individual committee member, as an individual town meeting member, as an individual resident, I would like to see us as Shrewsbury Public Schools, over time, gradually move away from the purchasing of styrofoam, simply because I do not want us to be supportive of that market. It isn't something that I feel is an emergency need. I am loathe to pass on food costs to students because I know that those dollar amounts seem low. I know that there's free and reduced lunch, but I also know that there are students whose nutrition in any given day is largely dependent on the nutrition they get from Shrewsbury Public Schools. So I'm loathe to pass those costs on. Having said that, I also know that that marketplace is changing. We have seen that Dunkin' Donuts is going to be moving away from the use of styrofoam, which I have to imagine is a multi-billion dollar impact in New England. And I do know that Mr. Collins and Ms. Nichols both do a great job of keeping their eyes on the market to make sure, make sure we're getting the best value for the products that we purchase. So I, as an individual member, would encourage them to keep an eye on moving us away from that product. That's my personal opinion and in terms of the opinions we've expressed here, we are left with the question of how to proceed to town meeting and Mrs. Consano made reference to one potential course of action. I will say, to the extent that town meeting members have specific questions related to the practicalities involved with getting away from styrofoam should the ban pass, I think it would be most appropriate to defer those questions to Dr. Sawyer and to Mr. Collins with regard to how the district would adapt to those. But in terms of a policy question, I do think that there will be town meeting members who didn't have an opportunity to watch this meeting tonight who are interested in our thoughts, which are clear from this discussion, to be somewhat diverse. Some differing opinions here. I am getting the sense, and please object if I'm correct in this, that there is not the sense that we should take a formal position on this warrant article. Is there an agreement on that? Seeing that, I would ask my colleagues for a vote to authorize me as chair to succinctly summarize this discussion for those town meeting members who wish to know the committee's perspective on this from a policy point of view. Mrs. Fritz moves. Dr. McGee, second. Is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes. I will take it upon myself to summarize this discussion for town meeting members to the extent possible. Is there any further discussion from school committee members on this topic? Seeing none, Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add to this?
No, Mr. Collins and I will, in my, Mrs. Nichols' support, will provide Mr. Palich with just the information and condense what was presented at last week's meeting. I think it would be helpful if town meeting members had some of the specifics in terms of numbers of trays and costs that we're projecting and those sorts of things so that they can make the most informed decision at town meeting next week.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is an item under New Business, which is relevant to the Shrewsbury Master Plan, which is report and vote on an update. There is a draft plan that has been provided to us by the superintendent, which would be the school committee's update for submission to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer to summarize what it is that is before us.
Thank you. Mr. Creedon contacted me and asked that I put this before the school committee. When the master plan was created a couple of years ago, there was a systematic approach where different committees in town and departments would have responsibility for certain action items. They asked me to create a report that the school committee could review and endorse. It's fairly straightforward, is in your packet, talks about some, some are broad along the lines of just our academic needs and building capacity and focusing on our strategic plan. There were a couple that were more medium-term, really wouldn't get to yet, around bicycle education and promoting more bicycle use to and from school. There is a, I should mention that there is a separate spreadsheet that was asked for the school administration to fill out, which I will do. And that spreadsheet was actually, many of these are duplicates, but the Safe Roots to School piece, which is also part of the master plan, was on that element and I'll make sure to update the master plan committee on some of the work that I know Mr. Wensky has done with the school administration and that we've been piloting at Sherwood, I believe, and doing some work with the state group. And so we've, we've had some progress there. It's not mentioned on this particular spreadsheet because that wasn't under the school committee classification. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I wrote down some, but they were looking at just brief progress and feedback. I wrote what I thought was appropriate and if the committee sees fit, if you could vote to approve this, I can then submit it to the town planner and to the master plan committee and for their use as they track the progress of this over time.
Questions and comments from committee members? I do have a comment. I just, just want to point out for anyone who has occasion to look at this report, you know, there are some items on here that it's noted we haven't had the capacity to make progress on and I don't, won't harp on this point, but something we've discussed in our budget discussions is, you know, obviously with financial resources being somewhat limited, our ability to meet all of the goals and objectives before us is at some point going to be compromised if the necessary resources don't emerge. And so I will just offer the comment that as we as a town look towards some of the things, we would like to see progress made on as they relate to Shrewsbury Public Schools, that resources are absolutely going to be essential to achieving those goals. But other than that, I don't think we have any further comments and I think you need a vote from us too. So I will ask at this time for a motion that the school committee vote to approve the draft of the master plan's update submission that is before us to the master plan implementation committee.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. We next have the approval of minutes. The minutes of our May 9th school committee meeting are before us. They have been reviewed by Mrs. Fritz. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions, questions, discussion of any kind? Seeing none, the minutes are accepted without objection. We do need to go back to an earlier item on our agenda, which we had skipped in waiting for a guest and as soon as my iPad will catch up with the rate at which I'm scrolling, which it's really not going to do. So I'll just mention that in accordance with school committee policy, we are required to vote on the acceptance of gifts that exceed $5,000 in amount. We have had a gift offered in connection with the athletic field. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer for that good news story.
Thank you. This is a good news story indeed. The campaign for Shrewsbury Athletic Fields continues and pleased to announce that Al's Oil Services is working with us to becoming the lead sponsor on the scoreboard. The scoreboard, you may recall, will certainly have the name of the stadium, which will be Central One Federal Credit Union Stadium. But then there'll also be some opportunities for logo placement and there was a memorandum of understanding within your packet that has been developed in consultation between the school department and with Al's Oil Services relative to a donation of $100,000 that they would make to the synthetic field project in return for their corporate logo placement on the scoreboard. And that would be in perpetuity, as is illustrated in the memorandum of understanding. We are extremely grateful for that level of generosity. We were hoping that Sean Flynn, who's a managing member of Al's Oil Service, and Rebecca Edwards, who also works with Al's Oil Service. We had also met earlier in the year with Ed Flynn, who has been a longtime leader of that family business here in Shrewsbury around, and very pleased working with Michelle Biscotti and Catherine Cohen, that they've been able to arrive at this level of sponsorship. So with that, as we have previously with several other pieces, I would ask that the school committee vote, take two votes this evening. One is to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding the proposed sponsorship and secondly is to actually accept the $100,000 of funds for the sponsorship. I certainly recommend that and we, this will certainly help us finalize in our ability to sign a contract and move forward with construction. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Questions or comments from committee members either on the memorandum of understanding or the donation before us? Seeing none, I'll just express on behalf of the committee our sincere thanks to Al's Oil for this very generous gift. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we vote to approve the memorandum of understanding with Al's Oil regarding the proposed sponsorship of the athletic field project at Shrewsbury High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. I will also entertain a motion to accept $100,000 for the sponsorship.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not need to go into executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.